I'm happy you've lost it. I think, I think you must, I think you must have, I think-
You know what it was when I pulled in and I was about to get out of the car? There's a woman in a leg comes in. Oh, Ben.
Microphone, Rob.
There you go.
Good evening, everybody. You can hear me now. Sorry, I'm a novice at this. Thank you. Welcome to the public meeting of the Hillsborough Planning Board, Thursday, June 12. May have a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2025 annual meeting schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk posted on the township's website and available at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Application documents, plans have been made available at the township's website. And at least 10 days in advance of the meeting, complete application files are available at the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with public meeting notice. Can I have a roll call of all planning board members and professionals, please?
Chair Serraci and Mayor Chicorelli are absent. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Flag?
Here.
Mr. Serradowitz?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Deb?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Committeeman Leponti?
Present.
Vice Chair Peason?
Here.
Mr. Coors?
Present.
Mr. Bernstein?
Present.
Mr. De Rosini?
Present.
Did I say it right?
Correct.
Okay.
Present.
And myself in the video.
Thank you. Next up is consideration of meeting minutes from March 13th, 2025. Counselor, who's eligible?
Eligible members are Mr. Wagner, Mr. Vitale, Ms. Smith, Mr. Deb, Committeeman Leponti, and the acting chair.
Can I hear a motion to approve? Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Committeeman Leponti?
Yes.
Vice Chair Peason?
Yes. Okay, moving on. I see no consideration of resolutions. So we are next to Planning Board Business, Public Hearing, Adoption of the Draft, Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan, Presentation by Jennifer Beam.
Good evening. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Jennifer Beam. I am the Township's Affordable Housing Planner. I've been working in Hillsborough since the second round, way back when. So things are a little different than they have been historically. Even in the last round, things have changed a little bit. So if you recall, round three, which was the 25-year period from 2000 to 2025, had significant obligation here in Hillsborough, 1378, to be exact. Through extensive mediation and negotiation that took months and months and months, we were able to get the court to agree, because if you recall, that prior round was all done through the court system. We got the court to agree to allow Hillsborough to take what we call a durational adjustment to the area that's outside the sewer service area, primarily the Mountain District, because in order to get out there, you would have to blast, and it was unlikely to be developed for an affordable housing project. What that does is it basically kind of puts a pause on any obligation from that area until such time as infrastructure is available. We were also able to take what we call a vacant land adjustment for the area inside the sewer service area, which is primarily where all of your development is located. And we were able to reduce the number to 1129, which is not that big of a reduction, but at that point, any reduction was appreciated. And we wound up complying with that number through a variety of projects, most of which you guys have probably seen here over the course of the past several years, as well as some supportive needs housing and surplus credits from prior rounds. So we were able to get a judgment of repose for round three. I will say that Hillsborough has a longstanding history of being a good player in this venue, have been participating, has not been, you know, since I think the initial round, Hillsborough has been coming to the table with compliant plans from the second round through today. This round is a little different. Legislation was adopted last year, which changed the framework for which this process takes place. There's an establishment of something called the program. It's technically the Affordable Housing Dispute Resolution Program, nicknamed the program, which is comprised of retired judges. I think there's 12 of them, Eric, 12 retired judges throughout the state that are tasked with engaging in this process with the various towns. And number one, the first thing that happened was in October of last year, the DCA released data that showed the established obligations for every town within the entire state. And Hillsborough's obligation was 565 units. The towns then had, 565?
565.
Yeah. The towns then had the month of, the numbers were released in October. The data behind the numbers were released in the end of November-ish. And there are three factors that the DCA took into consideration when they were evaluating everyone's obligation. Your land capacity, which is pretty traditional, an income factor, and a non-residential valuation factor. All three of those factors were averaged. They're all weighted the same, multiplied against what DCA determined to be the regional obligation for affordable housing in this region, which is Region 3, and established our number. The only data that was provided to the municipalities was the land capacity data. So we did an analysis December into January to determine whether or not we agreed with the DCA's analysis of our obligation, and we did not. We actually found that the developable land was significantly less than what was proposed by the DCA. And as a result, we were able to reduce our land capacity factor from a little less than 9% to 1.34%, which resulted, in our opinion, of an obligation of 270 units. This information was sent to the program along with a resolution that the governing body had to adopt by the end of January, saying we were challenging the DCA's calculations. In the month of March, it was called dispute resolution, where every town that objected to the DCA's number had an opportunity to have discussions with Fair Share Housing Center and/or the builders to determine if we could come to a settlement on the number. And we did engage in those sessions with Fair Share Housing Center. They, of course, took a hard line, saying the DCA's numbers were correct. We did not agree. Ultimately, the program judge recommended to the Mount Laurel judge, and this, Eric, is where you probably could jump in, that the DCA's number be the number that we're obligated to comply with. And that was, that's what came out of that scenario.
And for the board's edification, we have appealed Judge Menon's decision certifying the program's number, and we have filed an appeal with the appellate division. And it has just recently been on file, and we now await for the scheduling order for the briefing. But we are contesting the numbers. The overall number, basically, the issue through the mediation, I suspect, and these are my comments and not Jen's and not anyone else's, is that the number was too much for our friends in Cherry Hill to handle. And therefore, more than they could take. The Builders Association also appealed, which was rather amusing, because the Builders Association's members have done everything in their power not to build affordable housing over the last 17 years. And we had a current developer who has two round-three obligations they have not met contest as well the numbers. So based on all of that and the number being certified with the understanding, two things could also happen. There is a, what the legislation did was break it up into two types of situations. One was a present need and one was a prospective need. And for whatever reason, the legislature and its infinite wisdom decided present need is rehabilitation and prospective need is new housing. The program basically told everybody, don't look at your present need because we're not going to deal with it. We're overwhelmed and we're not going to deal with it. You can deal with what is called the windshield survey, which Hillsborough engaged in, which Jen will talk about, relative to rehab. And you still have the rights under the Housing Element and Fair Share Plan to go through the same durational adjustment and vacant land adjustment and analysis that we went through. We had, we had the right to go through again when it came to putting together this plan. Jen?
So, that being said, David helped out with spearheading the windshield survey for the rehab obligation, which he did over 100 units of rehabilitation, which comprised of, you did that through the Department of Health, David?
Yes.
And so they went out and they looked and made sure that there were no substandard kitchens, there were no substandard, you know, basic services, and were able to, with that windshield survey, reduce that number down to 33. And so the way to satisfy your rehab obligation is to engage in a program, whether it's through your administrative agent, the county, a combination of both, and the allocation of money associated with the rehab units. The reason that it's important to keep that number as reasonable or as realistic as possible is there's no obligation for us to affirmatively rehabilitate all those units. We just have to earmark the money in the event that people do come in for that rehabilitation, that the money's available. So if you have hundreds of units of rehab obligation at like $20,000, $30,000 a unit, you're, you're holding a million dollars that may or may not be used for that purpose. So that's why it's important to-
Can I just jump in? What's a windshield survey? Can you maybe define that or clarify that for everybody?
Basically said, is the Department of Health went out and evaluated all units in town and made sure there was no things that were below code, the kitchens were up to speed, there were no, you know, the rehab is based on-
Right now, I get that. How to windshield? How does the word windshield?
Drive around.
Drive around and look through your windshield?
What everybody is calling a windshield survey, and actually, there are guidelines established by the program. And all of us were sent such information from the program's chairman, who you may recognize the name, the retired assignment judge from this vicinity, Thomas Miller. And Judge Miller sent to all municipalities, this is the program upon which you can conduct your windshield survey, and it literally is, drive around town and look through your windshield, among other things, and come up with a determination. And this is not art, this is not Jen's, David's, nor Mike's term of art. It's exactly, it's absolutely what the program is calling it.
Thank you.
The regulations-
The regulations also call it that as well. So through that windshield survey that was conducted, we have placed in our plan a 33-unit present/rehabilitation obligation. And we will engage, we've committed to engaging in all those relevant programs that we've been engaged in, because this is not the first time that we've had this obligation. So now moving to the new construction obligation of 565. We did exactly the same thing we did the last round that the court approved. We did, we took a durational adjustment for those properties outside the sewer service area, and we did a vacant land adjustment for those properties within the sewer service area. And understandably, since a lot of the projects that were in our prior round plan have been approved by you over the course of the past several years, there's a big chunks of property that get taken out of that equation. And we were able to reduce the obligation through those two mechanisms to 223. And that's credits, not units. So in addition to modifying the process-
That's units, not credits.
Well, technically, it's credits. We have enough units, but I'll get there in a minute. Not only did they change the process through this legislation, they also changed the bonus, the bonuses. So whereas you used to get two-for-one credit for a rental unit, that no longer exists. So there's other bonuses that we were able to take, but nothing to the tune of two-for-one, which is what we did take advantage of significantly in the last round. Again, the same restrictions apply. You can only take up to 25% of your obligation as bonus credits, but they've increased the amount of senior units that you can take from 25% to 30%. So that is a little bit of a benefit. In looking through this, and David was very helpful in helping me put this together, there are a number of projects that exist in town that had credits that we were either not able to take in a prior round for one reason or another. Projects have changed their overall programming to include a little bit more residential development. And we were able to find a number of group homes that exist in the township that we did not take credit for in the past, and in those group homes, you get credit per bedroom. Out of those, I'll just give you a quick overview of the projects that exist. One is Hillsborough Crossing. So there's another three units that we were able to realize out of that project and one bonus credit. Because a lot of the bonuses are a half a credit per unit, instead of like two-for-one or one-for-one, it's half-for-one. So of the three, we were able to take one bonus. 856 Hillsborough LLC, two credits, one bonus. Hillsborough 206 Holdings increased the project by six units. We were able to take three bonus credits for a total of nine. Then there's a number of group homes. 490 Amwell Road, 500 Amwell Road, 32 Hamilton Road, 182 Hollow Oak Court, 440 Tall Oak Road, and 237 Zion Road. All of those are group homes, all varying with number of bedrooms, most of which have four, a couple of have two. This is on page 39, the table, if you guys want to follow along. And then Zion Road is 15. In addition to those, which that totals, that plus, we were able to extend controls. And what that means is that a property owner has agreed to rede- when the deed restriction is coming to the end, they have agreed to extend that deed restriction. And as long as the deed restriction expires within this round, which is 2025 to 2035, you're able to take credit again for a unit that exists already. So all of those credits total 72 credits against our 223-unit obligation. In addition, Habitat for Humanity has come to the town and has offered to build three duplexes for a total of six credits. So, so that, you know, takes up a pretty good chunk of that through a variety of creative means. So then we need to get to the balance and the heart of it, which is the new projects. And I can tell you, and I know Eric and David have been dealing with this a lot more than I have. We've had a number of interested parties come to the town, offering to help us satisfy our obligation. And in negotiations and discussions with various, you know, individuals on the governing body and staff, three projects were selected. The first is on Homestead Road. It's located at 189 200 Homestead Road, Block 200.01, lots 32, 33. You guys probably remember it. I guess you have a pending warehouse application on this property currently. The site's about 90 acres, partially within the sewer service area. The site will yield 398 total townhouses and stacked flats, which will include 96 affordable units. So that's, 398 is total, of which 96 are affordable. The second project is located in the Town Center, Milelli, I think I'm saying that correctly. Milelli Hillsborough. It is at 405, 409, and 411 Route 206, Block 199, lots 59, 60, and 62. The site's about little less than nine acres and is located within the town sewer service area. The development will yield 156 total units, will be a mixture of rental apartments and townhouse units, 119 market rate units, 37 affordable rentals. But because this is, this is a redevelopment of non-residential property, we get .5 credits per unit for a total of 18 and 1/2 credits. So this project results in 55 and 1/2 total credits. And then finally, there's a property located at 140 Falcon Road, identified as Block 141, Lot 7, on the tax maps. It's about 15 and 1/2 acres, located within the sewer service area. It will include 207 total rental apartments, 157 market rate, 50 affordable. And again, this is the redevelopment of non-residential property. So we're eligible for 20.5 bonus credits, resulting in 70 and 1/2 total credits. When you add all of those up, the 72, the six, and then these three inclusionary projects result in 222 credits, ultimately, we have 300 credits, 77 surplus. So, which is a good thing, because we still have to go through a whole process after we submit this and go back and forth. And so there are things that could happen. So it's nice to have a little cushion in the event that something becomes problematic moving forward. But we're not done there. We don't just get to pretend like the other 342 credits are just wiped out through this durational adjustment and the vacant land adjustment. That goes into a category called unmet need. Typically, towns would have to provide overlay zoning in various sections of a community to satisfy their unmet need. Thankfully, we did a pretty good job doing that in the last round. We have a number of zoning options and alternatives that, that will satisfy that, namely Town Center and some other zoning districts that exist in town that require the provision of affordable housing if it's developed in that way. And so as a result, no additional zoning at this time needs to be done. Obviously, you know, it's subject to the review of the program and Fair Share, whoever else, other interested parties. But in general, that's our plan in a nutshell. What happens from here, should the board act in the affirmative, is that within 48 hours, Eric has to submit the approved plan to the program. That's stipulated in legislation. And that has to be done, obviously, within 48 hours, but before June 30th.
The key being a latter, before June 30th.
Before June 30th. If it is not done before June 30th, we lose immunity. Right now, we've maintained immunity by being compliant through prior rounds. The submission of the resolution by January 31st of the governing body this year has extended immunity to July 1st. If we don't have this plan submitted by June 30th, we lose immunity, which means we lose control of our zoning. And you're going to wind up with projects at densities that you're not going to be happy about. So it is very imperative that we meet these deadlines. What happens after June 30th is, for the month of July and August, any interested parties, whether they're developers that did not get in the plan, Fair Share, interested residents, what have you, have the ability through the program to provide concerns, comments, objections, what have you. And then, after which, we will have to, obviously, zone for whatever ultimate projects wind up in the plan, because that's required by the legislation. And then after such time, all is submitted back to the program. We would ultimately wind up with a judgment of repose to the year 2035. And that's kind of our situation in a nutshell.
The process will continue on. Basically, we will have to address wherever we are. We're going to spend probably September, October, and November dealing with plan issues that we sort of dealt with for round three. And we'll have to make determinations by the end of the year. Ordinances do not have to be adopted until at least the first quarter of next year. Some of you may be aware that there was a decision that came out yesterday from Judge Logue regarding the application by a number of municipalities relative to Judge Grant's administrative directive. I will tell you, the press release was more positive than Judge Logue's decision. The basic two items that came out of it are, one, Fair Share. Judge Grant, who used to be the administrative director, acting administrative director of the courts, indicated that Fair Share was going to have to be allowed to review each and every plan before they moved along. He ruled that that is not in the legislation, and the only parties who have to submit their plans to Fair Share Housing are those municipalities who settled with Fair Share Housing, and a number of which we were not one of them, as Jen indicated, as did I. The other is that the legislation does not require the ordinances be adopted prior to the submission of the plan. Ours will not be for obvious reasons, and therefore, we are in compliance with both of those items. Otherwise, Judge Grant's directive actually was left in place by Judge Logue. For those joining, Judge Logue is the assignment judge in Mercer County, where these cases normally get heard. A couple of other points. One, as some of the members of the board are aware, in round three, we pushed for 24% affordable housing. The law requires up to 20. We basically required, and what Jen really didn't touch on, was we had nine objectors in the last round, plus Fair Share Housing, settled with everyone at 24%. We have kept the 24% for round four. So the numbers that Jen has discussed with you are based on a 24% affordable housing. The rationale for that is obviously to reduce the total number of units that have to be built. If we increase the total number of affordable, we reduce the total number of market rate. I will point out that if we were required to build 565 units in this 10-round period, that will require the building of 2,825 units of housing over the next 10 years. If that number, A, stays in place, and B, we are required to meet that number in housing alone, separate and apart from credits. So understand the rationale upon which we have come to this in a very compressed timeframe. The legislature was thrilled to handle this, dump it as quickly as possible and not look at it again. And we do not expect relief. We are not anticipating relief. I know there are others who are pushing that there will be. So far, the lawsuit that was brought by, I think it's about 20, Jen, 20 or 25 municipalities. Judge Logue's decision, I believe, is the first time they actually got a bat on the ball. Otherwise, they have been turned down every time for everything they wanted. I will point out that we are clearly coming up on round, the end of round three. I will also point out to the board that, separate and apart from this plan, we still have outstanding round-three obligations that have to be met. One of those developers was here last week. We have two other developers who also have obligations on four separate pieces of property. That's not covered by this plan. It is not part of this plan. It is still out there and has to be addressed, separate and apart from this plan. It is not a requirement. What Jen has spent a lot of time doing, David and his office, which need to be thanked in public for all the time and effort they put in, as well as Jennifer and all the time and effort she put in, is we are asking this board, once the public hearing is open and closed, to adopt the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. The next step Jen left out, one step, the governing body is required to endorse the plan. I believe, and Mr. Leponti can correct me, that's due for a appearance on the 24th, assuming that this board adopts the plan tonight. So, Mr. Chairman, unless, if board members have questions, otherwise I'd ask for the board, for the matter be open hearing to the members of the public who wish to talk about the plan.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody on the board have any questions? Ms. Beam? Microphone?
Lichen, Lichen.
Mike? Turn it on.
The calculation you said, that over the 10 years, the 2,800, what's, how did you-
If we were required to build 565 affordable housing units at 20%, which is the purported magic number, except here in Hillsborough, we would be required to build 2,825 total units, which if my math is correct, would be just short of 2,200 market rate units over the next 10 years. So basically, almost 300 units per year for the next 10 years, built all over town. Obviously, we have no interest in same. We are contesting same, and we are trying to address what we believe is the realistic number through this plan.
Got it. Thank you.
I had a quick question. On page 39, I- On page 39, I see the two-for-one credits and the .5, the half-for-one credits. In the inclusionary development, I see Mileleli Hillsborough, 37, and then 18 and a half bonus, but Falcon Road Partners is 50, and it's 20.5. Should that be 25?
No, and the reason is because you can only max out, like I said, 25% of your obligation can be bonus. So, once you hit that magic number, you're not eligible for anymore.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Can I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public would like to come up and comment?
On the plan only.
On the plan. Yep, name and address for the record. Thank you.
Gail Martin, Hillsborough Road.
Ms. Martin, you can actually take it out of the thing.
My question is about this whole process, because I'm confused about it. As you are aware, there is a warehouse application on one of the properties that you mentioned. What happens to that application?
It remains in effect until such time as this is either resolved, the matter is rezoned, or the application is dealt with accordingly. This does not change the status of the current application before the board on Homestead Road LLC.
So it will continue, and the next meeting will still be July 10th?
As far as I know, for a short period of time, that night.
Is there any discussion about sewers or waters for these, water information for these units?
I would say not yet. So a portion of that site is outside the sewer service area, but for affordable housing purposes, it is more than likely to get a site-specific wastewater management plan amendment for affordable housing purposes. And so they would have access to public sewer and water. A portion of the site is in the sewer service area currently. I'm assuming you're talking about the Homestead Road site?
Yes.
Yeah. So they would have to go through the pains of doing that sewer service amendment. That would be on them, that would not be on the town, and that the project, should this board approve this, should the zoning go through, should they approve the development, whenever that would come down the road, they would have to go to the county and the state and get the sewer service area amended to include the totality of the site. It's not uncommon, happens a lot, actually.
What about the impervious surface in that area?
So the site would have to be specifically rezoned for that project. That's required in the law. So the plan, the concept plan, would be prepared. We would have a litany of, David, I think you actually have a concept plan, do you not? We would have a litany of bulk standards associated with that project. I can tell you that typically residential development, the impervious surface is significantly lower than a warehouse.
And what are the next steps? Because I'm completely confused about the whole process.
What I'm going to respectfully request the board to do tonight is to approve the plan, the document, the paper document. Eric is then going to take that document and submit it to the court, as required by the legislation.
Before the 30th.
Before the 30th, within 48 hours, yes.
The intent for the record is that we are going to wait for the endorsement before we submit the entirety. There is a current, for those of you who are not aware, there is a current declaratory judgment action that was filed by this town and 400 others when we had to deal with the numbers issue back in...
January.
January. It's been so long, it's going by my brain.
It feels like forever.
Though the legislation did not require it, Judge Grant did. So that's why we had to file another declaratory judgment action. It's currently in the court. We will file it with it. Basically, we were supposed to be filing this with the program, which was the group established by the legislature to oversee affordable housing process. Judge Grant decided to throw in another step in the process...
Little zinger, yeah.
And require that everybody not submit it to the program, they submit it to the courts. The courts then submit it to the program. The program will review it. Ultimately, there will be recommendations, comments, corrections, et cetera. Ultimately, every visinege, and we're in a, we're in an interesting situation, we're in Region 3. Region 3, Jen mentioned, is Middlesex, Hundredan, and Somerset. The visinege this court is in is Hundredan, Somerset, Warren. So we have a Mount Laurel judge who's got basically two regions he has to deal with, and the person who drew short straw on that one was Judge Menon, who, on top of all the other excitement he's dealing with from Hillsborough, is already dealing with Hillsborough's Mount Laurel issues.
Well, I think I could probably, I think I could probably simplify it, because that was a lot, right?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What are you, you're expecting a lawyer to simplify something?
So, that's why I cut him off, because I could tell you were getting a little overwhelmed there. So basically, let's say they approve the plan tonight. The plan has to be submitted to the court by the end of this month, June 30th. So that will happen. The next two months is a public comment period, really. So like, any interested party, Fair Share Housing, anybody can offer comments to the plan. We're then going to go back and forth with them, probably into the fall, until we come to a meeting of the minds, whether, no, you're not getting in, maybe we'll let you in, whatever. The final, final plan will be done probably in the fall. The zoning for the properties that are in the plan will be done late, like, winter into the first couple of months of next year, after which, an application could be made to the board. So you're probably not going to see a project on this property until sometime next year.
Or any other property.
Right. But that's what, so it's going to be a number of milestones that we have to hit legislatively. One is the end of this month, which is a very serious one. And then, it's going to be a lot of back and forth, not in the public, just kind of negotiating back and forth with a variety of individuals, after which time, I'm assuming it will have to come back to the public to say, this is where we are finally, and then the zoning will happen. But it's going to take a while. Usually, this whole process takes years. The legislature has compressed it into six months, which is, I'm just here to tell you, my heart, my blood pressure is not loving it so much.
Now, the public comment that you're referring to, will it be at the planning board or the township count?
No, at the court. It's through the court. It's through that legislative process, through the court.
Will we be notified?
No.
Well, this is it. This is your notification that we're submitting on...
Then there will be no notification as to the open period, except that it is, will be part of the court system effective July 1.
Don't misunderstand. If a project gets put in this plan, it still has to come before this board. So you will be noticed, as far as the planning board goes, where they're going to have traffic studies, landscaping plans, you know, drainage, whatever. You'll have an opportunity, as if you would in any other site plan subdivision application, you would have, this board would see it. So you would get noticed for that, the public hearing, it'd be open to the public. It doesn't, just because it gets into this document, doesn't automatically mean all this goes away. They still have to go through this process.
But for purposes of comments as to the plan...
Yes.
There is no notice, and it will not be before this board.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Martin.
David Brooke, Seven Winding Way. I was kind of hoping she was going to get it all figured out, but I'm more confused after both of you have spoken.
You're welcome. You should, you should understand that, Counselor.
So, I just have to try to see if I can understand this. We have an active application for Homestead Road LLC.
Not had, have.
No, we have. I say, we have an active application.
And you still have one.
And so what role is Homestead Road LLC or Enhance Acquisitions playing in this affordable housing?
We have, we have placed them in our plan.
It happens a lot. Let me give you an example. So I also work in Upper Freehold. Upper Freehold had approved, approved warehouse, went through 21 meetings. It was a dream come true for me.
We beat that number.
Awesome. And they came to the town saying, we will abandon our warehouse approval if you put us in the plan for affordable housing. There's a variety of reasons...
We are not at that point.
I agree, but for a variety of reasons. But it happens a lot where you have an approval, there potentially could be a better alternative, where people would be less upset, be potentially less litigation, and so, right? So people will then propose something that will still get them what they need at the end of the day from the project, and not cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars in litigation. It happens pretty regularly. So, that's going to go, and you very much, very easily could, they could approve it, I don't know, I haven't been here, deny it, approve it, whatever. This process is running concurrently with that.
So I guess my question is, are there discussions currently with those folks, either to withdraw their application or to, because here's the thing.
I cannot, before you even ask, I cannot comment for two reasons. One, there is an ongoing application, and two, there is an ongoing litigation between Homestead Road and this board and the township related to the warehouse.
So on July 10th, we get together again, most likely, there isn't going to be a vote. How do you then put this plan in? You're simply saying it's because it's draft.
Not going to, not, you can come, any supposition you would like to make, the application's back on the 10th.
Can, can somebody pull up the schematic draft drawing for Homestead LLC?
Page 86.
Page 86, right. Can, does anybody have it? Can we see it? Because I had a question or two about it.
Asked away.
I would appreciate that. So, you mentioned the ordinance. I have concerns about the wording of the ordinance. You're suggesting that we don't have to provide it tonight? Is that correct?
We are required to provide a draft ordinance as part of the plan. That does not mean that will be the final ordinance for the property, assuming it's part of the plan. Understand, this is all based on the assumption that ultimately, that property will be part of the plan.
Right, but that's going forward, and so, for example, the concern about that property is it's hilly, as you know. And there's nothing in the ordinance about respecting the topography, whereas the warehouse is going to make a giant tabletop. So I just wanted to see about adding some wording to the ordinance, which you're saying will be opportunity?
Yes.
Okay.
So the ordinances that would be adopted to support any of these projects in the plan will go through the same process as any ordinance that gets adopted by the governing body. Will they be introduced?
Right, no, I...
At a public hearing.
Let me make, let me make a suggestion, David. If you have suggestions for the ordinance, send them to David, and we'll look at them.
Can, can we get page 86 up?
No, we don't, we don't have the setup for it tonight.
All right, well, then I still will ask the questions, then. Page 86, and the drawings, right? I know these are draft, but they're problematic, same way that the warehouse is problematic. Example, the proposal shows building units directly next to the railroad, few feet away. Honestly, I don't think that is logical. There may not be a prohibition, but if there's a derailment, and this happens, and the derailment occurs, you're going to wipe out a whole row of units. So that's part, I think, I, let's try it differently. Who did this drawing?
The applicant, the person that proposed the site for development. We didn't come up with this plan.
So that drawing was made by Homestead Road LLC?
Yeah.
Okay, that answers part of that. The other thing is, there's one road in over the pipeline. If there's ever a problem with the pipeline, not that that ever happens, remember Edison blowing up the pipeline?
Does the current application have one road over the pipeline?
It's different with trucks. If they blow up, who cares about a truck blowing up? I'm talking about people's lives right now.
The answer is, the plan shows a road over the pipeline. Whether that ultimately is acceptable, whether that is ultimately approvable, is yet to be determined. It is a concept plan. No, we're not.
We're not determining a site plan.
Well, I understand, but somehow drafts somehow become site plans, and so...
They can't, physically cannot.
Not in this situation. They're, they're drafts.
They have to submit an actual application to the board.
I know that, I understand that. What I'm simply suggesting to you is, drafts often just get reiterated back as a plan, and you have an opportunity, you, the planning board, or whoever, has an opportunity to try to make it better. You know, for example, the ordinance talks about recreation and parks. The drawings show none of that, and presumably, that would be part of it also. I just raise it again because you're presenting this as a draft.
It's a concept plan.
I'm sorry?
It's not a final plan.
Not final plans.
It's a concept, a draft.
Right, okay.
So this is going to be subject to change almost certainly.
Okay, fine.
So you're talking about something that's not even in existence.
I, I understand, I appreciate that. It's just that, when you see a draft, and, and then there's one other little comment as it relates to that. As you all know, not that we're talking about a current application, but we are, there's a stream that is in debate on that property, and the applicant, Homestead Road LLC, proposes to fill that stream. Our engineering firm, not you, Ms., Mr. Mayhew, and one of the objectors has clearly identified that that stream needs to be protected. You know, in Mr. Mayhew's final report, page 8...
We're not talking about the application, David.
I'm not talking about it.
Yes, you are. You're talking exactly about the application.
What I'm talking about is there's some strange level of hypocrisy here, because...
Okay, I'm going to have to cut you off. That, that's, that's totally inappropriate. There is no hypocrisy here. That's how this process works. There's not, there's no way...
You don't even know the plan. How can you even say that?
There's no way a developer or an applicant will spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to say, please put me in your plan, for the town to say, no. It doesn't happen. And I've done this, by the way, this is my 24th, 21st meeting this year. So I do this a lot. This is a typical, traditional manner in which to do it. I will tell you, and I agree, this is a concept, and I also want to go back to the fact that Mr. Bernstein and I reiterated to this board that this timeline, established by the legislature, is unlike anything we've ever seen since COA was inceptioned. It has been crunched into six months. Actually, for us, it was two months, because we had to go through dispute resolution. So all these things you're talking about, in an ideal world, where we have two, three years to go back and forth on everything, would be fantastic. We don't have the time, because that's just what I'm also going to tell you. If we don't do this by June 30th, the other 11 people that we didn't put in the plan will be here with plans, and we will have no ability to do anything about it. So while I appreciate the concern, I agree with Eric. I think you should write your concerns down, submit them to David. When we go through the negotiation process after the submission, we will keep your comments and concerns into consideration. But to have an expectation that, in two months' time, with an obligation of 500 and all the things that go into it, which is not, not, not just three pages on a piece of paper, is physically impossible, and I can assure you that every single person that is in my seat in every other town that's participating in this process would tell you the same exact thing. Actually, one of my colleagues wound up in the hospital. So this, I'm not joking, this has been an insane, ridiculous process. If you're unhappy with it, you need to talk to your legislators, because they're the ones that put this in place. And we've asked for extensions. We, every town has asked for a 90-day extension. The court has said, in every instance, no. So we don't really have the time to get down into the weeds on all these things and still make sure that you're protected. Our goal right now is to protect you. I understand that it may not seem that way, but that's what we're doing here.
Thank you for disciplining me. I do need that every now and then.
Anytime.
So, and, and you're misinterpreting, so let me just try to make one more point, and then I will allow the other folks to just ask their questions. There's an existing application, yes. In this drawing, representation presumably put together by the applicant, there's a note. That note says, "Existing wetland ditch to be filled." I would ask that you take that note out in your final submission to whoever, because there's been a major debate in the town about it, and the town has taken a stance. How can you put a draft in that completely contradicts what the town has already said?
We'll look at it.
And I appreciate the urgency, but when did this plan come out?
What do you mean, when did this plan come out?
When did we, the public, get to see it? May 30th, correct? And what day is today? Okay?
Which, by the way, is exactly in accordance with the law established by the legislature for the timeframe upon which these are to be met.
And I understand that. I'm simply saying that I'm not trying to slow it down. I'm simply saying, we have had a limited amount of time to look at it, and we're trying to very much...
By the way, as I said this morning...
Mr. Brooke, your, your issues are not with this board or this professional. Everything that you have just cited, going on and on, saying the same thing over and over again, that you were told, is not for this board. Contact your state legislature representatives, lodge your complaints with them. All Mr. Bernstein has indicated is, we're complying with the timeframe with which we have. So you don't like that this plan was just finalized on May 30th, and you don't have enough time to review it, digest it, make comments, and change it. It's not this board's fault. But it is this board's opportunity to make some logical corrections, if you can. That's all I'm asking for.
The board, the board will look at the con... The board, the board will look at the comment relative to the note. I point out, and Jennifer did as well, these are draft ordinances, which, by the way, the legislation did not require draft ordinances. The legislation, they, with Mr. Judge Grant again, adding his little nuances to it. It's not normal for a master plan amendment, including a housing element in fair share plan, to come with draft ordinances. It's just not required under the law. It's required because every, because the other piece of the puzzle is, that you can't have overlay zones in this round. You have to rezone the property, because if you put an overlay zone in, you couldn't allow a developer to back out and build what the zoning is. So this is a nuance that we're all dealing with, so we'll look at the note. If you've got any comments, please let Mr. Coys know in terms of the draft ordinance, and to the extent it can be potentially tinkered with between now and the end of the month, we will endeavor to try to do it where applicable. Otherwise, it's a draft. Ultimately, if we get the plan through, if I live long enough to see it, because Jennifer is being kind, it's going to be terror for three months, we will be back to have, the committee will be back to have to adopt the ordinances in 2026. And even then, I suspect they're going to get tinkered with then, forgetting the applications.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? State your name and address.
Craig Berlin, Alsehouse Street in Hillsborough. And this is my first exposure to affordable housing. And the first thing I was thinking of, in my own business dealings and things like that, just as a question.
Craig, pull the, pull the mic up or pull it out, because you sort of-
You sure you want to hear me?
People want to hear you.
I, I get it. Perhaps Jennifer is best suited to answer this. Is there a buy-down available?
No.
Is, can you work with a neighboring municipality, perhaps, that has an excess?
No.
There's my answer. I thought we were all going home early, I guess not.
There used to be a, a program back in round two, which actually, this town took advantage of, and I will disagree on one item with Jennifer. Round two, we were a builder's remedy town, was what they used to call an RCA, Regional Contribution Agreement, where we could send affordable housing to another town, and in Hillsborough's case, we sent it to that poor, blighted town known as Lambertville. Um, yeah, Lambertville.
Phillipsburg and Manville.
And, 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 we also sent a little to Lambertville, too, but Phillipsburg and Manville, I think Manville would be very distraught to find out that they were necessary for affordable housing as well.
I'm guessing that doesn't fly anymore, huh?
The legis, the legislature amended the Fair Housing Act and took it out.
In 2010, when the Roberts Act, they call it, they removed that as a possibility.
Okay.
And the reason why, for the public record, is because there was claims that the towns that were accepting the money for affordable housing weren't then building the affordable housing and sort of banking it. So the answer was, you ta, you rich town shouldn't be able to move your point, and you poor town aren't building it, so we're just going to get rid of it.
Good enough, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Berlin. Anybody else?
Rich Garman, Winding Way. Just a couple of basic questions. Could you understand or explain the credits and units? Are they a one-to-one ratio?
No.
Okay, could you explain that?
So, this round, if you're near mass transit, if you're redeveloping property that's currently developed with non-residential development on it, you get .5 credits per unit. Supportive needs housing, if you look in the table, so if you have a group home and you get credit per bedroom, you get one credit and one bonus per bedroom for supportive needs. So it depends on the project, but there's no more two-for-one, which we had in the prior rounds for rentals.
There's also a cap.
The cap is 25% of our overall obligation.
Are we at the cap with two of the properties? Because I heard you state something about credits. When it's a non-residential area and you're changing the zone, the Homestead property is a non-residential zone.
But is there development there now? It's not the zone, it's development.
Well, there's, there's buildings, there is a house, and one of the property has nothing.
We don't have any more credits to give, bonus?
Okay, well, that's-
We've maxed out.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we've maxed those out.
Okay, so you've maxed those out.
If we could, we would.
Exactly.
Right, okay. So you did state, this is a draft, we're going to have to go through the whole process, where, where the public's going to beat you up on different setbacks and all of that kind of stuff?
No, I think, I think other people other than the-
But yes, you will have your chance to beat us up on that, too. Yes.
Some of whom are in the audience.
How do we get our suggestions to the courts during this open public hearing? Do we have to go there, or can we email, send letters?
I'm not 100% sure, do you know?
How does that work?
I believe, and I underline the word believe, but don't, quote me, is that you will be able to get access through the court system, and I'm not sure exactly how we're going to have to figure it out, for people to make comments on the plan.
I mean, the safest thing is, if you have comments or concerns that you want us to consider moving forward, give them to David. David will get them to everyone, at least we'll have them and understand them as we move forward.
And then we can place them on the court record.
Exactly.
Right, but they're not-
That probably will be the easiest for you.
They're not necessarily due before June 30th, are they?
No.
Okay.
No.
Because it's going to take some time. The only other thing I'm going to say is, you might want to go through your plan, because somewhere you listed Hillsborough Township as Middlesex County.
Oh, okay, I'll make sure.
Thank you, thank you.
You missed that one.
Isn't it in Middlesex County?
No.
Haven't we moved?
We did.
Aren't we a qualifying urban municipality, like, four towns in Middlesex County that we're taking the brunt for?
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Scott Gross, White Meadow Road. What happens to your affordable housing obligations if the warehouse is approved?
Nothing.
So you build the warehouse, now you've got 96 units that you need to-
Just because it's approved, doesn't equal construction. My guess is that they're looking to get an approval, they're going to hold on to it until such time as this process vets itself out, and then they'll abandon it.
The answer is, we don't have an approval, we don't know where we're going, and at the moment, the plan is based on putting a housing opportunity there. If we ultimately have to deal with it, then we may end up with several more projects.
Right. The, the plan can be amended at such time if that happens.
So you would submit additional projects at that time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not if we can help it.
True.
Others, others will be, but we're not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Anybody else? One more?
My hands are like, humid in here or something. Right? A little humid?
Hi, Amir El Kholy, 32 Davenport. So there were, Jennifer, you mentioned, there were 11 other, 11 other applications that were denied. I'm curious, if the state did mandate that we had to fulfill the 565 credits, is there enough housing in those other applications to satisfy that?
Yes.
Is it like, way more?
I mean, this plan has 300 credits against, even if it was 565, so you're, you're more than halfway there. Yeah, there'd be plenty of opportunity to get there. I don't foresee that happening, because we did stipulate, the one thing we did agree upon when we were in mediation with Fair Share and the program, was that we were able to take these two adjustments to adjust the number down. So I don't foresee it going back to 565.
Okay.
I'll make the following point. If applicants want to come before the planning board or the zoning board, because right now, none of the properties are zoned for affordable housing-
Affordable housing, yeah.
Not even affordable housing, for residential housing in the manner they want, except, I believe, the Milelli property. There's nothing to stop you from continuing to move forward with a potential application, but you're going to either have to get a zone change, or you're going to have to go to the zoning board and get a use variance, where there is a very high standard for getting a variance from what the existing zoning is.
Yeah, I mean, like, the, the point of the question was to see, like, is this like a dead end, sort of thing? Like, should we just continue with what we're doing, or, because I, the gist I got from the hearing was that, over the next two months, there, the number might get adjusted from 300-something to a little higher, so you might look at other applications.
Every, everybody's going to have a chance to comment on the plan.
Okay.
Whether I want, whether we want them to or not.
So what does that mean, comment on the plan, like, you have to like-
You can file objections, you can comment in favor, you can comment against, you can claim the township has not met its obligation. There are standards that are established by the program and the legislation as to what qualifies you to be an objector, in the sense of a development, not so much, you know, if, if I, John Q. Public wants to object, that's one thing. If I have a piece of property that I want to have considered in the plan, that's another. There are a whole nother set of issues.
Okay, but you mean as far as, like, not speaking directly to the town with you guys? You're saying, it's like, go some other route, is what you're saying? Like, object to the state or something?
The route's going to be through the courts, through the, through the court, through the system, and as Jen indicated, I'm not, I will, I'm not totally sure how they're going to accept these. We're waiting for directive. I will indicate to the board that Judge Logi's decision requires that the, the administrative office of the courts do amend Judge Grant's directive, and maybe, just maybe, they'll let us know where that is, because I'm not sure anyone particularly gave a lot of thought in how it was going, how the objections were going to be submitted.
Okay. All right. Okay, because I was, I'm thinking, like, is there a date that you know you'd hear back from the courts where this is the final number, and then if you needed to-
We have an existing declarat, we have an existing court action number, there's a declar, there's already a docket number for the, for this.
No, the, the court already decided through dispute resolution that the township's obligation is 565, but have said that we can take these adjustments during compliance, which is what this stage of it is. So we've taken the adjustments, we've adjusted down to 223. Fair Share is certainly going to have an opinion on it, it's going to go back and forth. You have the month, the month of July and August.
A number of people are going to have an opinion on it. The point is, right now, there is an existing court docket, and you can file through the court docket, I believe, but in order to do so, you have to have access either to E-Courts or go through the clerk's office in Somerville.
Yeah, I go, that's not my intention. I guess what I'm trying to say is, like, if there was a point in the future, if you said, like, okay, two months from now, there's going to be a date where we're going to know that this is the number, because Fair Share objected or whatever?
In theory, it should be done by the end of August, in theory.
Okay.
But as Eric said, this has been a moving target from the start.
Well, the answer, the plan, ultimately, by the end of December, we will either have an accepted plan, or we will have to go on record as why we don't agree as to what the number is.
Yeah, so I guess the, my point is that, at that point, like, if, if there is the chance, the town's like, okay, we do need a couple more units, would it be known to the public, and then we could apply at that time?
If you're going to potentially, and I'm trying desperately not to give legal advice, objections to the plan, the plan we're talking about here need to be submitted by the end of August.
Okay. I guess you're saying, you're saying contact-
My recommendation is to just hold tight until the end of August. If you're interested in maintaining your position in the process, stay engaged, stay involved, keep an eye out, and, you know, if there's things that need to be submitted, we don't even really know how this is going to go. So just hold tight, you'll probably know something more definitively by the end of the summer, and then you can make whatever decisions you need to make them, but as of right now, I can't really tell you how it's going to go.
Okay, cool.
If you want a position, end of August. That's all I'll say.
Yeah.
Wait, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
End of August.
End of August.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. Motion to close, public?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
I think the board is aware that it is a recommendation of myself, not only in my capacity as the board attorney, but also as the township's affordable housing attorney. Ms. Beam, in her position, is the affordable housing planner, and Mr. Coys is the director of planning, as well as his office, that we ask this board to adopt as submitted, with the change to make sure we're in the right county, and look at the one issue raised by Mr. Brooks relative to the item on the Homestead Road at piece. As to the note, to adopt the plan and submit one sign to our office, and also to forward it on for the township committee consideration for endorsement.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Do I have a motion to adopt the housing plan element in Fair Share plan as described by counselor?
I'll make that motion, so moved.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Who got it?
I believe there's a resolution, David, that they'll ultimately have to sign. I think we did provide one. If not, we will.
Are there was a draft resolution?
Well, that has to be submitted as well.
You'll be, you'll be adopting the draft resolution that we have already provided. We had a motion, I think, Mr. Lombardozzi, you have a second?
Mm-hmm. Roll call. Mr. Ragnar?
Yes.
Mr. Flag?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Brad Telly?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Put him in the party.
Before I say, I'll just, the member of the public, you know, this system is, I have the pleasure of doing this now for probably close to 20 years, when I was on the planning board, before I was on township committee. It is, is a broken system. They tried to fix it, and they actually, in my opinion, made it worse. Our staff, I want to thank Mr. Coys, Jen, and our attorney, you do not know the things and the hoops they had to go through to get this stuff done so we could be here today. I'm talking Sundays, weekends, nights, plus, you know, Ms. Beam represents a bunch of other towns, as she stated, so it's, it's not like she's just doing Hillsborough. The timeline that they gave us is horrible. We knew it right from the beginning, and I, and I, I wish that the people who vote on this had to sit there at night with these people and do the work that they had to do, and they probably wouldn't have done this. But that being said, this is the plan we have for the next 10 years, so I will vote yes, but I would hope that anytime you see someone from the state, give them your mind about it, please.
And Vice Chair Peasal?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Radowitz would like to place something on the record relative to information.
Yes, certainly. A number of people in the audience this evening and have posted, made comments, had questioned how to submit their comments or concerns with regards to the plan that we submitted to the court. The best way to stay on top of that is by contacting the Somerset County Clerk's Office, the Office of the Ambsden. The phone number for that is 908-332-7700, extension 13240. You can contact them anytime, and simply tell them that you have an interest in the Hillsborough Affordable Housing Plan, or any other township, affordable housing plan that's submitted, and they'll guide you on where you can submit your concerns.
Thank you, Bruce.
Can I, Chris?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, hopefully it'll be easier than getting here.
You have a motion to adjourn? No. Watch a whole group of people over here.
Okay, um, yeah, I want to take, take, let's take, um, let's take 10.
Can, why don't we, can I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman? We deal with the first application, then we take 10, and then we can sort of start.
Uh, okay, we still have a public hearing. Matters not on the agenda, though. You want to get through that?
Why don't we just go to the, for the application, jump out order?
And do public, public, yeah.
Public hearing, 303 Amwell Road, JMJ 4, Abiel LLC, file number 21-PB-17-MSPV.
Public hearing, 303 Amwell Road, JMJ 4, Abiel LLC, file number 21-PB-17-MSPV. Time of decision, 12/31/25 with extension block 198 lot 2.03, 303 Amwell Road, formerly known as 301 Amwell Road, as the ongoing application for a warehouse, of which the township is currently in the process of looking to acquire the property. Make yourself, make yourself comfortable, Mr. Berlin.
I'm just going to ask what the status is.
Get a microphone on you.
And state your name for the record.
Craig.
The green light on?
This makes it torchy.
There's a little-
Gotcha. Craig Berlin, Alsehouse Street in Hillsborough. The last time I was involved in any of this was, as the objector, was when the last set of plans came through, which I believe was sometime in '23. So I'm not looking to stir anything or anything else, but I really have no idea where we stand, other than the fact that I was here when it was voted on that it was going to be purchased. If it hasn't been purchased, I'd like to be advised as to what's holding it up. And I'm not looking to get in the way of anything. I just want to know where we stand.
So the, there's still some due diligence going on for the property. So there's Phase One and Phase Two studies that are being done in some minor clamps. So until that mitigation is remedied, then they will close on the property. That's where we are.
Okay, but the plans, the plans as of now are to go through with the sale?
Yes, 100%.
Great. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Councillor?
You want to open it up to the public? Anyone else other than Mr. Berlin who has a status as an objector?
Okay, we're on, we're on 303 Amwell Road, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else from the public?
Mr. Chairman, it's a request for a motion to extend the time of decision on this application to 12/31/25 without further notice, relative to this application.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Fred him in the pony?
Yes.
Vice Chair Pisa?
Yes. Okay. Now we'll take a break. On the clock in the room here, 10 of, 10 minutes.
Quarter after.
Yeah.
Eight twenty-five, eight thirty.
Get him a business here. Yeah, son. Sorry, I skipped one. We have business from the floor for matters not on the agenda from the public. Anybody from the public would like to come up? Any business that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the Somerset County Improvement Authority Solar Array File 25 PB 09 INF Block 175 Lot 39.02 and Block 177 Lot 55 for formerly known as portion of Block 177 Lot 23.02 Block 175.18 Lot 39.04 Block 175 Lot 39.02 and Block 12 Lot 13 Pleasant View Road. Reference as 131 Mountain View Road. Applicants seeking an informal review for the proposed ground mounted solar facility approximately 23.989 acres with Block 175 Lot 3902 owned by the Somerset County Improvement Authority. The facility will include an electrical connection on Block 177 Lot 55 owned by the township of Hillsborough with associated access and associated improvements on property located in the ED Economic Development District. Okay, you guys want to introduce?
Actually, is that, David, is that property owned by the township of Hillsborough? Or the Somerset County Improvement Authority?
Somerset County Improvement Authority.
Because it says township of Hillsborough.
Right.
For the purpose of the record, it's the county improvement.
Okay.
By the way, there will be a short quiz, members of the board, as to that description. We will be asking you later to recite it. Counselor?
Good evening, Gregory Assedorian.
Greg, move it a little closer, the mic a little closer, so everybody in the back can hear you.
Good evening, Gregory Assedorian from the Dakota's Law Firm on behalf of the Somerset County Improvement Authority. I had this great introduction prepared, and Vice Chair, you actually just took it from me. So with that said, I'll be even briefer than I was going to be. We're here on an informal review of a capital improvement project to install ground mounted solar facility. The property is owned by the Somerset County Improvement Authority. It's been vacant for 40 years. Solar facility is a clean energy facility, and this project will provide a benefit to the public, one of which is a discounted electric rate to local residents, in particular low to moderate income households. So with that said, I want to just proceed, and we'll try to be as brief as we can. My first witness is Keith Peltsman.
Counselor, before you call your first witness, for purpose of the record, can you indicate to the board what, for some of whom have not been through this, what an informal review is?
Sure. A capital improvement project on the municipal land use law, it's under Section 31 of the MLUL. What it basically says is when a public agency like a county or a public body has a piece of property in a town, they're allowed to go ahead and build a project. And what they do is they come before the board, and they basically say, look, this is what we're proposing, this is what we're going to do, it's our property, but it's located in your town. So they present the application how another, any other applicant would, and then this board has the right to make recommendations. Those recommendations are non-binding upon the public agency. So then at that point, the public agency can say, thank you, we've taken your recommendations into consideration, we'll do some, or we'll do all, or we'll do none. So that's essentially what it is.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, proceed.
Thank you. So with that said, I'd like to call my first witness, Keith Peltsman.
Great, thank you.
State your name and qualifications for the record.
Keith Peltsman, President of Independent Solar.
Mr. Peltsman, move the mic closer. It's like we're singing.
There you go. Test, test. Test, test.
Now, we're going to swear you in first.
Are we on?
Yeah.
And now we're on. Thank you.
Mr. Peltsman, you're familiar with the site, correct?
Correct.
And can you describe for the board the site itself and the proposed project?
Yeah, sure. First introduction, my name is Keith Peltsman, I'm President of Independent Solar. We have been developing solar projects in New Jersey since 2007, we're in our 19th year. And this site, we were introduced to almost three years ago. It is a 297 acre parcel owned by the SEIA and leased to the township. And we have a lease with the township for up to 30 acres for development of a solar field. Our current plan calls for 24 of those 30 acres, so 80% of what's available. 24 acres of the 297 acre parcel is 8% of the parcel. We currently have significant approvals. We are, just to give you a sense, we are really ready to move towards construction permits. We have approvals from PSENG, from the BPU. Also, any requirements from the DEP have been met as well.
Thank you. Can you please discuss the site and the proposed project?
Yeah, sure. This site formerly was the Bellmead Army Depot. It was assembled in the 40s as a distribution center to support World War II. It subsequently closed and was deemed contaminated. The soil was remediated through 2016 through 2019. The top 12 inches of the soil were removed. This area where we're planning to locate the solar panels primarily had railroad lines, the entire site had over 44 miles of railroad lines. You could see some pictures of what it looked like prior to remediation. There is a, currently, a mound on the site where the contaminate, where some of the contaminated soil had been placed. In addition, there is still a groundwater investigation where a plume of TCE has been identified. That's about 1,200 feet northeast of where we plan on putting the solar field. This is the tax map. You could see we're bounded by, by Mountain View Road and a portion of Amwell on the north. This is the portion where we plan on putting the solar panels in the southeast quadrant, just behind the Iron Peak Sports Bubble and Mountain View Park. In addition, PSENG is requiring us to interconnect to their grid on Pleasant View Road, so we will be running an underground line approximately 2,000 feet onto the northerly parcel, which is 170, was it 175, 55? And that is owned by the township. That will just have an easement to locate the underground electric lines as well as an electric equipment pad and some poles to join to the PSENG grid there.
There was a prior application several years ago for solar mounted facility at the property, right?
Yes, in 2020, there was another solar developer who had proposed a larger project over greater acres. Their model was slightly different. They were going to just put the power directly onto the grid and sell it wholesale, and didn't have some of the components that we had that would benefit the community.
And this is a lot smaller project than that one, right?
Correct. We're about 30% of the footprint that they had planned.
And this project will yield a benefit to the community, will not?
Yes, I can just take a look. There's about four different benefits. So we are availing of a program in New Jersey called Community Solar. If you haven't held a Community Solar, essentially, you can benefit from a solar project without locating it on your property. You can be a subscriber or an off taker and receive a discounted electric rate on your electric bill as a subscriber to a project that is more centrally located. The rationale for this is it's much more cost effective to build a larger centralized project than to build thousands of projects on people's roofs. In fact, not everyone owns a roof or can benefit from it. So this project itself, over the term, will save about $7 to $10 million for local residents. That's about 700 households will benefit from this. And in order to take advantage of it, you don't need to sign or commit to anything. You can take it on a monthly basis. It will automatically show up on your PSENG bill. The second level is that the Community Solar Program in New Jersey dictates that at least half of our off takers or subscribers must be qualified low and moderate income households. So those are the folks who are most struggling today to pay their electric bills will receive relief directly on their electric bill from that. The third benefit is the site itself. This site has not been developed for many years, it's a contaminated site. I think it's a nice story that we're turning a quote brownfield into a quote bright field, and that it's something that the community can be proud of. In addition, there's minimal impact on the ground itself. So our means of affixing the solar panels are three inch screws that go into the ground. We're not really significantly in changing the, the site itself or having impact on the natural characteristics of the site. The fourth, and I think important for everyone here, is we're also paying rent to Hillsborough Township for the use of this site. Over the term, that could aggregate anywhere from five to eight million dollars. I also think it's worth noting that the town will soon be making rental payments on this site in order to offset the bond payments due as part of the acquisition of this site from 2019. And our rental payments to the township will help offset the payments that you need to make on that. I also think this is just a landmark site. It's going to put Hillsborough really on the map of sustainability of having and hosting a Community Solar Project on township rented land. And there aren't that many townships in New Jersey that can say they are hosting a Community Solar Project. So oftentimes, the subscribers get contacted and say, hey, would you like to do Community Solar? But it's not quite tangible. There's a solar project somewhere upstate. The folks in Hillsborough who are benefiting from this on their electric bill can actually go kick the tires and go see this and say, hey, this is something that we're benefiting from, this is something the township did to help us save money. So we think there's a few benefits there.
And this site has been vacant for about four decades, correct?
Correct.
Can you discuss the disturbance, if any, to the site as a result of this project?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, we will not be driving piles, we'll be turning ground screws in, we'll be pre-drilling here because pretty soon we hit bedrock in this site, so it's necessary for us to pre-drill and put ground screws in. That will really be the only ground disturbance, other than a 200 foot access pathway inside the fence line. There is an existing gravel road there that runs throughout the site, and some small 10 by 30 foot electrical pads, we'll have two of those.
And there's going to be no wastewater as a result of this project?
No, I mean, one of the really elegant things about solar panels is they don't do much, right? So we don't have really much in the way of mechanical equipment. They will turn over the course of the day, so in the morning they'll face east to face the rising sun, and they'll rotate over the course of the day to face the setting sun to the, to the west. But there's no consumables, nothing is burned, nothing is incinerated. They kind of just sit there and harvest the sun.
And this project will not generate any traffic once it's built, right?
No, no traffic. There may be an occasional site visit from a technician, just to check on it, once every two or three months, but it's usually one or two technicians. There's not a good deal of maintenance involved.
And obviously, you know, it's not as though a house or something's being built where you're going to have kids going to school or crime as a result of it. It's just a site that, once it's built, it just kind of takes care of itself.
Yes, and so we are not doing any significant regrading. We will maintain the existing landscaping, which is a planting of meadow grasses.
Is there anything else you would like to add?
I think that's it.
So I have no further questions for this witness?
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions from the dais?
Just a, thank you, just a couple of questions on the benefits. I'm looking at the, at the slide, it says a 40% benefit on PSENG bill for 700 plus households. We have more than 700 households in Hillsborough. How do you determine those 700? And the low and moderate income is 50%. So is it 50% of the 700? So is it, if a person is not low and moderate income, does that mean there's only 350 chances? How is that determined?
Yeah, so we need to have at least 350 low and moderate income households. That is, in many cases, a self attestation. We are not the only Community Solar Project in New Jersey, so anyone in Hillsborough can take advantage of any Community Solar Project that is located in PSENG's footprint.
But how do you do that? And how it's, so anybody can sign up or call them? You said it's?
I was saying, if you have 1,000 inquiries, how do you?
How do we decide? We'd have to start, yeah, we'd have to start a waiting list at that point if we had 1,000 inquiries. There is a website that the state in New Jersey offers where every Community Solar Project is listed, and to the extent other projects have availabilities, folks can avail themselves of those projects as well. There are also more sites coming online every month.
What is your typical waiting list? So let's, you know, look, and the only reason I'm asking is you're saying 40%. So I mean, we're faced right now, although the governor has changed his tune a little bit as far as increase on electric rates till December, maybe after, something happens in November, I believe, so maybe that has something to do with it. So how does, a lot of people are probably going to be interested in it.
Sure.
I happen to run the Social Services Department here of Hillsborough Township, so I deal with people that come in, our seniors that come in, I deal with people that are clients or our customers for our Community Assistant Network. Work with the county on energy saving programs for people, so that's why I'm asking these questions, because I'm expecting if this is coming to Hillsborough, those questions are going to come to myself and my team, so I want to make sure that we understand when somebody says, you know, you go on a waiting list, so somebody comes and says, you know, how long is a waiting list? Is it years? Is it months? Is it, you follow up? I mean, I guess the devil's kind of in the details, right? So I don't know if you can get into that?
Yeah.
Or if there's somewhere that you can, and I know it's just kind of a draft thing.
Here's what I'm saying, I'm limited to the size of the solar project, right? I can't oversubscribe, and I can't offer more electricity than the system outputs. But what I will say is there are groups I'll call subscriber organizations that represent multiple Community Solar Projects. There's only about five throughout New Jersey. And they go ahead and they sign up subscribers who are interested in the New Jersey Community Solar Program and put them on a waiting list so that when a project does come online, they sign those people up. So you could sign up now for the New Jersey Community Solar Program and just await a project to open up. You don't have to wait for this project to open up necessarily.
I'll follow up on that. Once you're in, are you in till you get, move, get off, or is there a term, is there a term limit, you know?
You're, you're, so there's no commitment, right? You can leave at any time if you move. If you move, I believe if you move within PSENG, you can port that subscription to your new account. If you move out of PSENG territory, you lose that benefit.
You're not, you're, not like you rotate, like you're allowed to stay on for three years and you have to re-up, or you're in, you're in, you stay in the house for 20 years, you can stay on the program.
Yeah, and I don't believe, like, we can kick people off.
I'm not saying, I'm just asking, just, just for the record, right? Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
Thank you, Keith.
Questions here? Some of this could be theoretical. I do not know a whole lot about solar energy. But my questions essentially would be from, do we expect any exposures that we have not taken into consideration? I'll give you a few examples, right? Solar is a good concept, right? However, on the ground, right, integrating variable solar output with, you know, our aging and inflexible, you know, electrical structures that we have out there, it could cause systems instabilities, that has happened, right? There have been, you know, upgrades, curtailments that were involved. Do we see, have we taken those things into consideration? I'm just trying to see what the township could be on the?
Yeah, sure. Right? Are you asking this question from an electrical engineering perspective?
Somebody who generally understands a bit about.
Okay. We do have, the next witness I was actually going to call, that's his job, so he could answer all those questions.
Okay. Yeah, I had similar, you know, questions, like say, for example, degradation of panels that happens, 1 to 5% every year. Who's going to be upgrading them? Are we on the hook for anything of that sort?
Yeah.
Hail damages, weather damages, are we on the hook for anything of that sort?
Okay, that question I can answer, yeah. We won't need to provide electrical diagrams here for that. So, one, there is no maintenance obligation on the township as per our lease. It is our property, we own that, so if a panel is damaged, we have to replace that. We only get income when we are generating electricity. So we have an incentive to maximize output, we have an incentive to maintain this to its utmost capacity. Okay? So if hail damages a panel, we will go out and replace that, we'll maintain spares on site, or we'll maintain spares. If they degrade, that's on us. There are certain expectations, there are certain warranties. If the panel degrades beyond what it's warranted, we'll replace that. If you're asking about the interaction with the grid, so we had to go through a study process with PSENG that took several months. They studied the impact on the grid. If it had a negative impact, they would not have approved us. They certainly understand, in many cases, the additional voltage provided by solar supports the grid and creates more stability. One of the questions, I don't know if you're asking this, but I was, will there be a storage component? No, there is not a storage component here. We do not have batteries, yeah.
No, my questions essentially pertain to if there is any exposure that we might not have kind of taken into consideration. Or maybe say, for example, the benefits that we talked about, right? Getting X percent discount or whatever kind of a thing, right? What if, on the ground reality, you know, the benefits don't track to what are being projected?
Sure.
Right? So, you know.
Yeah, so just to be clear, so all the electricity is exported onto the grid, it supports the grid, it's not going directly in anyone's home. It may make a quick left and go into homes on Pleasant View Road or Amwell because it's there, and then the grid doesn't have to pull the power to there. Regardless of what the solar project generates, we still need to make our rental payment to the town, so that benefit will be there regardless. If I am not generating, then, you know, I say it's a 40% discount, we receive the other, the 60%. So we have every incentive to maximize that and not to let it kind of languish in a low production output.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, if you guys could pull up the map again, just to, so I want to completely understand where exactly it is, because I know the park and I run these parks all the time, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah.
How, in relation to the skate park, like, it's mentioned in the application, there's a view in the pictures.
Yeah.
What, how is the skate park relative to where the field is? If you could point it out to me.
So the skate park is, we will have an underground wire line that will run 2,000 feet from the field to the skate park parcel. There will be a pad about 10 by 30 feet, electrical pad, which will be surrounded by seven foot high fencing.
Okay.
And that will have the meters that PSENG uses to track the output of the system, and then that will be the point of interconnection where the electricity from the solar field merges onto the PSENG grid there. And if you could picture the skate park, there's kind of a grassy part of that between the skating area and Pleasant View Road. So that will be in that grassy area, but as close as possible to the wooded corner of that.
So I guess there's the next logical question, is there any other, like, security measures from the skaters or anything, so kids don't go and jump into the?
I'll put the site plan up.
You know, take a skateboard and try to jump over it or something.
So the, I can, I can talk to that. So with the skate park over at Ann Van Middlesworth, we have cameras there? That, knowing where this is coming through, what we'll capture, and also in AVM Park, there's cameras for the parking lot in the buildings. Now, they might want to suggest additional ones, but at least what we currently have access to that whole area is 24/7.
So here is the pad kind of closer to Pleasant View Road than to the skate park. There will be signage there that says, you know, danger, high voltage. There will be fencing there. If someone were to take that risk, that'd be the same as kind of climbing into a substation, if you will.
Is there a different place it could be located?
Well, the pole that we have to interact with is that pole on Pleasant View Road. So I, I.
That's dictated by PSENG.
It's dictated by PSENG. So this was the least invasive place to put that pad. It doesn't face Pleasant View Road, there is a fence there existing, so it would be close to that fence.
It just seems to be pretty close to where kids play, so I don't particularly like it.
I had a couple of questions.
Sure.
Let me go back to the, to the plan. I saw rental payments five to eight million. Is that over the life of the project? And how's that calculated? Or how's that, you know, determined?
Yeah, sure, so that, that is in the lease, and it's a 20-year term with two five-year options for us to extend the lease. So it's based on 20 years at the minimum, 30 years at the, at the maximum.
So that variable between five and eight is in the two five-year extensions to be determined at that time?
Correct.
Okay, and then the actual lease agreement, the solar array is on county land. The part that is being rented from the township is the transmission line that goes underneath. In that lease, I'd like to see some type of hold harmless, you know, that the township, if somebody were to get, I don't know, shocked, get killed, get whatever, contaminated, that when the town gets sued along with everybody else, that we're held harmless from any litigation that might be, you know, the, that should be borne upon the, the project and not on the town. Do you know if that's in there? Anybody, any counselors can maybe speak to that? Or what I would suggest is that be reviewed. And I understand the county's going to do what the county's going to do, we really don't have a say, but I'd rather, you know, have liability where liability belongs.
I can't, I can't speak to the lease itself, but I do know the town does have protections under Title 59, and your attorney can describe that for you further, but it's basically the tort claims notice where there's a high hurdle, there's a high threshold there for someone to sue you.
I'm familiar with Title 59. It doesn't bar if somebody got killed somehow, I don't know, but I, it's just a suggestion for me.
We'll take, we'll review again, we've, there've been, I've lost track of the number of iterations of this agreement that my office has had to deal with. I'll check with Mr. Hack.
Vice Chairman, so this was negotiated by his office, and if it provides some measure of comfort, it was not a template that we gave to the township, they gave it to us.
That's fine, okay. Anybody else?
I have one more question related to the kind of safety, it's kind of smack between two parts. It's very easy to walk back there. Like I said, I legitimately run by this all the time. What kind of security measures are going to be, as far as fencing around the solar field?
Okay. Yeah, so the field itself will have a seven foot chain link fence around it. There will be gates for vehicle access, for emergency access. We did not think, and I don't think the town wants us to put barbed wire on these gates. That is the standard provision, that is the code there, the requirement for security. Within here, there is another fence, it will be pretty close to that fence line. The gate for the skate park itself is more the, the drive entrance there. I don't know, but it looks like it's about 180 feet away.
Is that all of the solar panels?
Oh, the solar panels themselves?
Is that the fence?
Yeah, oh yeah, that will be fenced, certainly. And there is a buffer of about 16 feet between the first solar panel and the fence. Yeah, sure, and, yep, yep.
Counselor, do we open to the public?
Yep.
Motion open to public?
So moving.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public like to question, comment, Mr. Peltsman? All right, seeing none, motion to close public. I'll leave it open, sorry, okay. Thank you, Mr. Peltsman, I think we're. Anybody from the public like to question, comment? Mr. Pelzman? All right. Seeing none, motion to close public. I'll leave it open. Sorry. Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Pelzman. I think we're, we're good with that. Counselor, you have anybody else?
I have a couple more witnesses. Um, I'll leave it to your discretion. I do have the executive director of the, um, Improvement Authority, uh, which I was hoping I would not have to call. I do have an LSRP who's gonna tell you that the property is now clean. Um, I also have somebody from Advanced Solar Products who is familiar with the installation and how the project is, uh, built, which may answer some of, uh, questions that were heard tonight. And I also do have, uh, an engineer from CME to, uh, provide testimony with respect to the site. So really, I'll leave it up to the board's discretion. If the board feels they have enough information, uh, then I, I will not proceed. But if the board does have further questions, I do have witnesses.
Chairman, can I suggest minimally the individual from CME come forward? I'm gonna, I was tempted to suggest the executive director, but I know she'd kill me.
Okay. Um, yeah. Counselor, that, that sounds good. Thank you.
If they can justify their ability.
Matthew Zwingraf, Z-W-I-N-G-R-A-F, may, uh, project manager with CME Associates, licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, certified municipal engineer.
Would you like me to qualify him?
Yes, please.
Mrs. Zwingraf, can you please provide the board with the benefit of your educational background?
Sure. I have an engineering degree from Lafayette College, class of 2011, been employed as a engineer with CME Associates since 2011, uh, specialized in municipal engineering, site development, uh, and the like. Testified before boards across the state.
And have you been accepted as a expert, uh, in the field of engineering by planning and/or zoning boards in this state?
I have.
I, I would, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the courtesy.
Licensed current?
Yes, current and in good standing.
We'll accept it.
Zoom out. So I don't want to reiterate too much of, uh, Mr. Pelzman's testimony, but just, uh, so we're all aware, the solar installation is proposed in the southeast corner of Lot 3902, Block 175. And as you mentioned, the interconnect is going to be located on Lot 55, Block 177 along Pleasantview Road. Uh, with regard to the placement of the solar field, you mentioned, um, the fenced-in area represents approximately 24 acres of the 297-acre site. With regard to placement, with respect to the existing, uh, zoning, to the east of the site, there's existing residential located along Oxford Place. Um, we have delineated here on the plan, the minimum setback from that residential, uh, the rear yards to the perimeter fence on the solar installation is approximately 538 feet. So we're looking about 550 feet from the, uh, closest panel to the nearest backyard fence. Between those two points, you can see here along the eastern boundary of the Army Depot site, there's an existing, unfortunately shown, uh, not shown on the site plan here, but there is an existing, um, heavily wooded buffer that creates a visual break between the solar installation and those residential backyards. Um, it's bifurcated by a swale that runs along the eastern corner of the property. Um, on the eastern side of the swale, it's approximately, uh, 50-foot wide, uh, vegetated buffer. Um, our landscape architects have reviewed it in the field. It consists of a, um, combination of desituous trees, um, evergreens. So there's, there's interest throughout the year and cover provided throughout the year. As far as just referring to some notes from my landscaping, uh, landscape architect includes pines, uh, cedars, red maples, oaks. Um, so there's a combination of trees there that when they reach their mature height, you know, if they haven't already, they'll be anywhere from 30-foot to, uh, to 90 feet tall. Um, in addition to that, along the ground, there's also a, um, a healthy buffer of, of scrub and bushes to kind of build up the lower portion of the buffer. Um, and just also note here, um, we are separated, you know, over 500 feet from these residential lots. There is a, you know, slight elevation component to the berm, too. It's located a couple of feet above the existing grade. And the, I don't know if it was mentioned previously, but the solar panels themselves will only be about eight feet above grade. So it's not like we're trying to buffer a, you know, significant building or warehouse. Everything is, you know, fairly well, um, limited in height on the site. One of the other things Mr. Pelzman noted was access, so I'm just gonna zoom out quickly. All the access to the site's gonna be provided from, uh, from Mountain View Road. There's an existing access drive which leads to the site. At the point in time that, uh, the site adjoins that access road, we're proposing a 200-foot long, 20-foot wide gravel access road into the site. That'll be gated. That leads to some of the proposed electrical equipment that's, uh, situated on this portion of the site. Additionally, and this was a comment that was brought up in the chief fire marshal's letter, we do have an alternate access gate. It's a 12-foot wide gate on the southeast corner of the property, so we do have multiple points of ingress and egress. Um, we have run a, um, fire apparatus turning template through the site, so it is able to access the site via the existing gravel road. Um, there's also a point, um, just beyond the solar installation site where the maintenance road comes to a T intersection, so that would give them the opportunity to make a K-turn and, uh, back out and exit the site. Another item that was brought up was, um, actual ground disturbance and impact to the site. As Mr. Pelzman mentioned, this is a very low-impact development with respect to ground disturbance. Um, all the solar panels, as he mentioned, are just gonna be, uh, installed on ground screws, so we're not looking at big concrete pads or anything underneath the, the bottom of these, of these panels. It's gonna be the existing, uh, meadow grass cover that's currently out there now. And that's gonna be solely with the exception of the small, uh, concrete equipment pad in the northwest corner of the site and the gravel access road. So all in all, we're under a quarter acre of any new impervious cover out there. We're maintaining the existing swales and drainage patterns that run throughout the depot, um, so we're not proposing any changes to that. So from a stormwater standpoint, this is a very, uh, very low-impact development that won't have any negligible impact on the way that the site currently functions now. And then finally, just with respect to, um, uh, regulated areas on the site from a, from a DEP standpoint, um, we've reviewed that, we've prepared an environmental impact statement. There's no environmentally sensitive areas that are gonna be impacted by the installation itself. Um, we've walked the site, we've done borings on the site. The nearest wetlands that exist are down along the existing access road, and those are located about 300 feet, um, from the closest point of the fence. So no impact, no impact to that. And then finally, this has received Somerset Union County, uh, sorry. Yeah, Somerset, um, County Soil Conservation District approval, and it's also received a jurisdictional determination from the DRCC Delaware Raritan Canal Commission, um, that exempts it from review, given the low impact from a stormwater perspective.
Last witness, I forgot to defer to my, our professionals. Any comments from, start with Panoni, Aaron?
Uh, thank you. The only thing that I did want to mention, I also had walked the site in regards to the buffer, and you're correct, it is very filled, except there are portions, um, and not so much along the residential end, but near the parks. Uh, I do understand that it is elevated, but there are areas within that, um, that are kind of blank. And, um, being that that space is also used as a walking path, and I understand it's not a horrible, um, image on that side, but I think that trying to, you know, adequately provide additional screening where we have these blank spaces throughout that, uh, the length of the fencing would be a recommendation. Um, the other point that I wanted to mention is in regard to the fire truck. I did see the, uh, fire chief's, uh, letter. The only thing that we had saw based on the plan that was provided was that the truck actually wasn't showing a turn, just kind of showing the entrance. That was only a thing that we wanted to make sure that that was adequate for, um, the fire chief. And I think at that point, those are the two major comments that we had of concern. So, you know, we'll leave that as our recommendation at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I do not have any questions or concerns right now. Uh, my office was, has been involved in the process of, of laying out this site. Have we been outworking very closely, especially with some of the arrangements, uh, that have been made with the township. Uh, so this is a plan that we've been reviewing for some time, and in terms of the type of review, uh, there's a number of, of solar standards that, that are not applicable because this is a public property. So in terms of any of the requirements they have, uh, they, they are meeting them. So I have nothing, I have nothing to add.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Coice. From Deas, any, uh, comments and suggestions? Oh, yes. Mr. Deb, you had some questions, uh, that was more towards the engineer about.
That is correct. However, like I said, most of my questions pertain to exposure that the township might have. And so far, I've been adequately satisfied with, you know, the responses that I've received. Had just one question.
Sure.
Should there be any subsequent, you know, engineering representation or something? Um, and again, it's, it's not pertaining to any specifics, just from a general point of curiosity, are we gonna see any? I don't know how to put it. Anything new and cool when it comes to this installation out here? I understand this is a standard ground installation, but, you know, we hear things about like vertical biracial panels, you know, or, uh, drone thermography for maintenance and all that. Are we, is any of that, any of the newfangled stuff included in here? And that's just a general curiosity of mine.
So I, I would have to defer to the experts on that. I'm really just limited to, to the, the site design, but I'm sure if that's a question that the, the team could, could speak to.
We do have a representative from the company that's gonna install the projects, if you wanna hear from him.
And again, just to be clear, this is purely from a knowledge perspective, just to know, because there's something exciting happening in our town, right? So, um, doesn't have any ramifications on.
I, I, I think as long as, uh, that, that person is here and for the benefit of the public, uh, that would be great if there's not any other questions. Well, thank you very much, Mrs. White. Oh, yes. Uh, any questions for this witness from the public? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They all came to get a chance to speak.
Yeah, why not?
Just wearing testimony gives the nice, good, the truth, the whole truth, the truth.
Yes.
Yes, it's, uh, Richard Schrak, last name is S-C-H-R-A-C-K.
Mr. Schrak, who are you presently employed by?
Advanced Solar Products, based in Flemington, New Jersey.
And how long have you been employed by that entity?
About 14 years.
And what are the, what's the nature of the business?
Uh, so we're a design-build firm, uh, EPC company. So it's engineering, procurement, construction. So we would handle the, uh, the engineering procurement and the installation of the, uh, the project.
And how many solar panel projects have you been involved in?
Uh, roughly about 375.
Now, I think you've heard some questions from Commissioner Deb about, uh, the panels that are gonna be installed. Are you able to answer his questions?
I am, yeah. And I like that you called it cool, cause I find all of this stuff cool, obviously. Um, so bifacial panels, you mentioned those. So this site is utilizing bifacial panels and, uh, a vast majority of the ground mount projects we install are fixed tilt. The other cool thing about this one is it's a tracker system. So as, uh, Mr. Pelzman mentioned, it's, it's going to track with the direction of the sun, so east to west, so, um, also, uh, well, about 20 minutes, our company's about 20 minutes from this site, so we'll probably handle a lot of the operations and maintenance going forward. Uh, and we do utilize, you know, things like drone flyovers and things like that. Um, so I think all those things are pretty, pretty neat highlights, so, yeah.
Cool. That's exactly what I was looking to hear. And I'm happy.
Anybody else?
So I don't think, for the record, what's the size of the solar, how many KW?
Uh, I believe it's around 3.5 megawatts. 3.6.
Okay. Cause it, we didn't say it, so I thought I'd get it up there.
Great. All right. I think, I think we're good. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming up. Uh, oh, any questions from the public? Um, okay. Does that conclude?
That concludes. I have an LSRP in case you guys wanna hear about how clean the site is. Other than that, uh, I have no other witnesses.
Yeah, I think we're good. Counselor, anything else to add? All right. So just, uh, I'll, I'll spit out the, uh, the motion here. Uh, so we're just looking for a motion to.
Well, before these are the motions, does the board have any rec, board or the professionals have any recommendations to this, the County Improvement Authority relative to the application before you tonight? I would just defer to what our, and Jering said it has to look into some additional buffering where it makes sense, um, along the fence line.
There was one thing that I wanted to mention, um, and I'm not sure that it was ever truly clarified, but where the, uh, 10 by 30-foot pad is located far near the skate park, um, I don't believe the plan showed a fence there. I know you had mentioned a fence, um, so I just wanna make sure that that's actually installed, because that was a main concern in regards to safety.
Yes, a fence will be installed there.
Great. Okay. So I hear a motion to recommend the Somerset County Improvement Authority solar array filed 25 PB 09 INF.
With the changes noted in the recommendations of both the planning director and Panoni, as well as comments made on the record this evening.
Okay. We had a motion and we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wager?
Yes.
Mr. Flack?
Yes.
Mr. Radwitz?
Yes.
Miss Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Deb?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Minimum in the pony?
So we were here on, during COVID, doing this first of, array, um, that was obviously significantly larger, but I'm very happy, finally, Mr. Pelzman, we, we've been through a lot of emails and with Eric's office, that we have reached to a point where this will become a project that'll be done. So thank you and yes.
Ann Byer, please.
Yes.
Don't we need a proof that this is owned by the Somerset County Improvement? I always make friends with my partners.
Thank you, Counselor.
Avery coming out, it's, 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 uh, a pleasure to have a, an application that doesn't involve the 23 hearings and.
Doesn't involve warehouses and doesn't involve affordable housing. We are thrilled.
So thank you for the, for the change-up. We appreciate that. Okay. Uh, seeing no other, um, business on the agenda, we have any comments before adjournment?
Why keep you here for a few hours with the answer is no? Uh, there are two items that I think Mr. Coice is about to discuss. One is the business meeting and one is the day before 4th of July meeting.
He doesn't better talk.
He does.
Well, since he didn't have, since he didn't have a microphone, I thought I'd fill in.
So.
You can't take his pay, though.
No, I'm not taking his pay. Um, I'm assuming, I'm assuming the recommendation, David, is that there is no need for the business meeting on the 26th.
Correct.
Okay.
Or the third.
So do I hear a motion to cancel?
Are we sure we don't want them all to stay here and not go away for the 4th of July weekend?
It'd be an empty room.
So we have motion to.
Cancel the. Cancel the June 26th and the July 3rd meeting.
It's a two for one?
What he said. Yes. Do I hear a motion?
I had a motion.
That's a motion. You have a second?
I have a second.
All right. All in favor? Before do we need a roll call?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye. Can I remind...
Any nays?
The Fab Five, the July 10th is our next meeting, and we have two happy applications. Application number one will be Mr. Gross and his crew giving their closing arguments on Harvard Way. Not Harvard Way, sorry, Harvard, it's Harvard. Homestead Road LLC. And we also have the return of Harvard Way. Those of you who have been provided the materials for Harvard Way, I need you to attend, because we have a bare minimum for that. And those of you who are eligible, obviously, who have sat through the 25, 26, 27, I think it's 26 now, hearings for Homestead, need to be here also on the 10th of July. If, God forbid, you cannot be here, we'll have to figure out how we're going to deal with Harvard Way. We're also going to have an executive session for Harvard Way before the application.
Okay.
No, we're going to have it before, after Harvard, after Homestead. But before we start the Harvard Way application, we are going to have a break for a closed session for the board, to also the board members, to meet with Natalia Angeli, who is the insurance carrier's attorney in this matter.
All right. That's, so we'll take that under advisement. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? No.
See all of July, half of April. Quiet from, from motion to adjourn.
All right.